Hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of this meeting. First up, I'd like to open up the public hearing on our zoning bylaws. Beth, have we heard from the code 360 people?
No, the deadline was the eighth, but I have not heard from them and Chris has been out of town for a few days. So unless he has, we haven't heard a word.
Okay. Do we have anything else on? Pretty much that's why we've been continuing this meeting. Anybody have anything else, other discussion on our proposed bylaws?
I, I think at some point we need to cut the code 360 stuff loose and just go forward with the rest of it. I'm, I'm really tired of waiting for this. We, we've, we've been waiting months now. And, and they've missed the deadline and no apologies, no explanation, no requests for extension. I, you know, I, we spent a lot of time on this thing that wasn't really my idea to start with. And, and now we're being held hostage for our whole project because they can't bother to prepare the recommendations in a form suitable for town meeting. I, I just, I just, I'm losing patience with it.
I, I don't think we're there yet. I mean, if it's February or, or end of January and mid-February, then I, then I think we've got to move forward. I just don't think we're there yet.
I agree. Um, Beth, what's the feedback from Chris or he's not really waiting for us to give a go ahead, is he? They're, they're gonna schedule a special town meeting at some point?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they, but they know we have a lot of bylaws. So either way, when they schedule the meeting, if we don't have the code 360 back, we'll just move ahead with the rest.
That, that sounds like a plan, but I mean, on Peter's note too, probably, I'm thinking sometime January, we're gonna have to just put that to the side and go ahead with the rest.
The reason I I don't really want to take action on it tonight. I just, I, I bring it up because I wanted Beth to have some basis.
That sounds
I think the original, uh, the reason why it was delayed is because we asked them to prepare it for us.
Divide the project in two and go forward with one half and drop the other half. So I want to give them plenty of warning that they're overdue. So I hope that Beth will communicate to them that at least one board member has expressed dissatisfaction.
Sounds good.
But I do think that they, the reason why there's a delay is because we asked them to prepare it for town meeting. Isn't that right, Beth? Didn't we ask them, we asked them to give us, and they said it would take a while. I'm not sure they missed the deadline. I think they told us it would take a while.
I thought it was gonna be originally just a month. It was gonna be quick. And then, and then after we asked them again and again, then they finally, at the last, last month, our meeting, they, they committed to December 8th. And now they've missed that.
Okay. I, I, I didn't realize they missed the December 8th deadline.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So Beth, if you want to get in touch with them, an email saying that the board is very eager to move forward on this. And if they're unable to give us our, what we requested, we will have to table it for another time. Sound good, Peter?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. And, and if, if we're not gonna have a town meeting on this until the spring anyway, Matt is right about the not being in a rush until January or February, but when February comes around, I'm gonna be pushing hard if we don't have it yet.
We don't have it by then. We're gonna, I mean, we're gonna have to let the selectmen know for the special, what is gonna be on it. And if we wanna lighten the load, this would, that would probably work well. Okay. No further discussion at this moment. I, we will continue this public hearing. Anyone want a date?
Peg gets her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peg.
Okay. I was, oh, yours up too, David? I'm sorry. I was wondering if you wanted a motion to continue the public hearing on the bylaws until
27th.
Of December?
Yeah. That's our next meeting.
You want to do that or just go to the 10th of January?
I, I just say do it every meeting because then if, if the public wants to come in and ask a question about yeah, something on the bylaws, we're giving them the opportunity to.
I like that. Do we really need a motion on it?
I don't think so. I think you can just continue it, but if you want to do a motion.
All right, let's do a motion.
Yeah.
Sound good, Peg?
I'll second, I'll second Peg's motion.
Okay.
27th at 6:00 PM.
Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote. Peter Blum?
Aye.
Matt Carlino?
Aye.
Dave Forrest?
Aye.
Peg Byron?
Aye.
Okay, we're continued till the 27th. Um, next up, discussion on zoning for 50 and 58 West Center Street. Sir, Beth, is there anything in our packet about this one? Or are we just discussing? Is that why the Leeper Vos are here?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I guess you guys have the floor then. Tim?
Yeah. So we're just kind of, um, kinda, you know, out there and wondering, um, just because we're not seeing, seeing much activity going on and we're trying to, um, you know, do due diligence with our property. That, you know, three, about three years ago or so now running, um, we, you know, set forth to develop the backyard of the pumpkin patch. I was gonna put a warehouse back there. I was gonna renovate the shop and do due diligence to stay in that piece of property. And at the particular time, there's quite a lot going on with the new construction across the street. And that they would love to have the property and would really make things help them out to have the property in the parking and so on and so forth. So our three years down the road, I switched gears. I said, well, that sounds good. Actually found another piece of property to move into. It worked out well for us. Um, and now we're just kinda sitting kinda wondering if anything is ever gonna happen across the street. And we're trying to do our best to get our place out on the market, our properties. And there seems to be, um, you know, the last possible interest we had was looking for a drive-through. Well, 23 years ago, we bought the property. The drive-through was, in my opinion, was a fast food drive-through. We had a Burger King, we had a McDonald's. And that, they didn't want another fast food drive-through on the main street of Lee, which we're not actually on Main Street. So here we are 23 years later, there's been no changes. We had a potential possibly customer or, you know, willing to purchase the property. But they found that it's be very, very hard to get a variance to have a drive-through because that's not any longer zone for a drive-through. So that kinda fell through, I believe. And I don't think they're gonna move any further because they got word that it was too difficult in the town of Lee to maneuver and to get a variance. So we're just kinda wondering what it takes in the town to get a variance, to make things happen, to start developing the town again. So that people can move forward to a certain extent without months and months and years of delays. Do you, do you, do you know that there's a potential buyer for the property?
Uh, could, could I pipe in, uh, Tim and Janice? I'm Rich Aldrich, uh, I'm from here in Lee. I represent the Leeper Vos. And, uh, I lead the commercial real estate division for Stonehouse Properties. What I wanted to add was today I have a investor client that would be interested in buying the two properties, 50 and 58 West Center, would develop them, build a suit for a potential financial services client in lease it long-term. But, uh, they have no interest if there's this barrier to development. They're not gonna do this on spec. Uh, and, uh, would not have interest if they didn't know there was a possibility or a strong possibility of getting a variance that would allow a two-lane drive-up on the property.
I don't hear that. I, I don't know if a variance would be the, be the way, but possibly, but, or a zoning change is, is what you might want. To allow a drive-through.
Are we talking about something like a bank drive-through? Possibly, is that, is that what we're all talking about?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. And why is that, why is that prohibited? Does anybody wanna review?
It's not allowed in DC.
They're not allowed.
Not allowed.
Okay.
Is that? And that, and that zone was put into place, we were just wondering, that was years and years ago. And there were, you know, homes across the street. Well, now all of those homes are abandoned. And it's on the docket for that to all be, um, you know, yeah, developed. So we, you know, do we have to spend thousands of dollars and hire, um, you know, engineering firm to do this? Or is the town willing to work with us? Uh, that's where we're at. Those are the questions we'd like to answer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm looking at it and bank without a drive-through, which
Well, I, I have a question for you.
Yeah, what do you got?
Mr. Chairman, um, when the Kentucky Fried Chicken was there, did they have a drive-through?
They did, I believe, right?
Then they may wish to briefly speak with the municipal attorney somewhere to say, is this a situation where they can re, um, you know, they can re-establish a, a business with a drive-through as a pre-existing non-conforming structure now, maybe because that's gone. I don't know if physically, if they've taken that window or whatever out. I don't know what they've done. But it could be a case where, because it's not a variante-able issue. It would either be a zoning change or it would be a special permit by re-establishing a pre-existing use. So that, those are just a couple of quick thoughts that are available to them without a lot of money invested, but it, it would, they would certainly want to speak with a, an attorney who's, who understands municipal law and the whole pre-existing non-conforming thing. That's all. Cause it could be a route that, that'll save them money and get the job done. I mean, I'm, I'm open. I mean, I'm open to somehow working it out to get them a drive-through. I mean, they bought it with a drive-through. I mean, it seems
There's that route and there's
But I don't think, I don't think that, just from a process standpoint, I think re-establishing the special permit with, uh, after it being taken out of that zone, not allowed. I don't know if that can be re-established. So that's why I said the zoning change. But, you know, we are going to town meeting with bylaw changes. I mean, we could maybe
Drop that.
Doing these owning changes quickly here and, and add it to our list if we wanted to.
Drop the drive-through part of permitted.
If everybody's on board, I mean, I'm, I'm for it. It seems kind of
Doesn't make sense why it's there.
Can anybody tell us, can anybody tell us what the history of this was? Why did they come up with this?
Gordon?
Yeah.
I have no idea. I think
Probably 40 or 50 years old, if not long.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's not quite that old. I don't believe. I, I'm not sure. I don't wanna speak out of turn either. I, I
Was there listening on this?
Well, I don't know. Yeah, there was at the time. And also the members of the board at the time had a different vision of what was gonna happen downtown. I think what you may wanna consider is looking at the, cause I know we're gonna be doing a, it's too late. I, I, you don't wanna go through this whole process, but the whole, take a look at what they've done toward a divisioning that they had with, in terms of a overall town, like where they see the town going and whatnot. Um, I know the master plan issue, basically, I've always brought up the master plan, which is way out of date now. But really this kind of thing and this kind of development would be covered in the master plan as a concept of why you don't want drive-throughs. And, and I honestly don't understand how it got through at the time. I think it was one of Aldo Pascucci's babies, you know, where he, he didn't wanna see that be reestablished into downtown, downtown. I, I don't see why not. You've already got a bank and some other areas close by with drive-throughs. So I'm kind of at a loss to understand why the board did it. I wasn't on the board at the time. But I know that it was definitely specifically when they did the DCBC zone, which was probably back in the nineties. That's, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that was something that the board at the time had in mind, but I'm not so sure that that's where the town wants to see us go. You know, I just, there's a lot of things we're gonna have to change, including, you know, density of residential. There's just a lot that the town hasn't done because we haven't updated our master plan.
Funny you say that. Look what's on the agenda.
Yo, I know, but how long's it been? You know?
Yes.
Too many years. And, and I guess got tired of talking about it, but this is part of the visioning that you have to have with a master plan. How do you wanna see the downtown? And nobody expected at the time of the last master plan to have the Eagle Mill go out of business and have it sit there. And then this kind of development, which is one of the reasons we did the overlay district, was to allow for re, you know, some work downtown. And I think they
Master Plan?
Yeah, no, I, well, I think the problem was that the master plan gives you an idea of what the town wants to do. But then you always, it's a living document. You have to revisit it. You have to update it. When the economy changes and when, when social norms change. You know, I, I don't think anybody would be opposed to the re-establishment of a drive-through. You know, and if the board, if through, um, a legal, you know, and a municipal attorney could take a look at it and see what they've done and make a good argument for re-establishing that. You know, I, I don't see that it necessarily a problem. Can we re-establish? Can we re-establish it though, if it's not in the bylaw? Well, you can look at section, yes, that's what the whole section six, the master in law 48, section six is about the commercial. Uh, so look at our bylaw and not the A part on residential, but the B part on re-establishing the pre-existing non-conforming. You can, you can re-establish something that's gone. But you can only, if it's non-conforming, but you can only do it by special permit through the planning board after specific findings that it's not a detriment to the neighborhood, et cetera. It's like, it's like the mobile home we did down and behind the, uh, mill. Basically, yes. Similar idea. But again, you know, uh, I'm sure that there's case law on it. And, you know, that's why I, I don't know the case law per se, but I know it's there. Uh, and I've seen things re-established that have been gone for 20, 30 years. So that's probably the way to do it then. If it's, if, if we use the mobile home. Well, you want them to talk to a municipal Of course, of course. But I mean, if we use that as an example, they re-established, we no longer allow mobile homes, right? We haven't for, since the seventies and no new ones, but you can re-establish and replace them by special permit. It's a different section of the law. Okay, yeah, that's a, yeah. I wouldn't point to that one. That's, that's a little bit different. Anyway, that, that's just a thought, you know, they take it or take it for what it's worth, but it, but it's a path that may be a shorter path than waiting for the town to take some kind of zoning action to change the zoning. Well, I was thinking we, we're, we're going to a special town meeting in maybe March. Yeah. April, you know, so if we actually did that, we, we'd actually only be a few months away. And granted, uh, if we could do a special permit to re-establish. And I, I bring up the mobile home only because that was an old mobile home that they got rid of and, or they, they, they replaced. This one is, this drive-through is still there. Well, we don't know that. That's what, that's the, that's the pitch that they have to make. That it's there and they wanna re-establish it. This is why they need to talk to somebody other than us. Yeah, I mean, I know they need, I'm just, well, I, I drive by, I thought it was still there. And maybe That's what I'm saying. It's But that's the
Chicken anymore, Matt, but the drive-in's still there.
Yeah. Though, you know, that's, that's the perfect reason to say that it exists. They wanna re-establish it by special permit. Now you don't need to go to town meeting. Who knows who's gonna throw a monkey wrench in a, a town meeting? You know, and if you already have a format to do this in the existing bylaw, use it.
I think, uh, are you, Gordon, are you thinking subsection E abandonment? That it can be re-established?
No, not
Read that one, Gordon, quickly.
I don't have it open here. Um, you know, what I'm saying is that just go to that section on pre-existing non-conforming uses. Somebody has their hand up. I don't, I don't wanna keep talking.
Okay, let, let's work through these. Um, I think Peg was up first. Peg?
Thank you. Um, yes, um, I have no problem if you want to, when you mess up a lawyer and try to find out some things whatsoever. Um, I think personally it brings up a lot of things. I think where you are on your property has a specific zoning that sometimes, as I look at the different districts, I've said this so many times before. And, um, I don't think they're always congruous with one another or the districts itself. So I'll just say again, railroad street to me is not the same as High Street, uh, facing Town Hall. I think the districts as at some point, and not tonight or not for town meeting, but but we need to really look at the districts, what's in the districts and make sure the streets correspond in a more congruent manner. So those are my thoughts. And I would hope that if you could perceive, pursue this in some way, that you would do it. And our zoning bylaws specifically say in the downtown, we can't have drought, uh, drive-throughs. You can have them on Husaton X Street and different things. So I understand your concern. I understand that it's been a while since hopefully we're going to get going. There are the town well on the Eagle Mill and, um, you did move out and go down to 102 and you seem to be happy there. And I think that's great. Um, but I also feel, you know, you have property that is for sale and no doubt you'd like to sell it. And I understand that. So, um, a special permit might be possibly easier to get than changing the bylaws at this point in time. That's just my view. Thank you.
Kathy Hall, please.
Okay, thanks. Um, I'm just, um, trying to remember if Kentucky Fried Chicken had a drive-through. And I asked my husband and he said, no, they did not. And I mean, we lived across the street for many years and I don't ever recall there being a drive-through. People always went inside. But I could be a hundred percent wrong, but in my recollection, there was never a drive-through there. If I were still living there, I would not object to a building having a drive-through because that there's plenty of room there, um, for cars to go around the building. People have done that for years anyway. They've, they've parked, um, somewhere else or gone to another establishment and parked in the Leeper Vos property and have gone around the building. So that, that certainly wouldn't be a thing. So I don't know in terms of, of the town or whatever. But I don't think Kentucky Fried Chicken ever had a drive-through. So good luck. And I would like to say, even though it's a public meeting, I would love the Leeper Vos to donate that property for a community center. Or, you know,
I bet you donated your house across the street too.
You did. If you think the price, if the price is right, maybe the town will buy the property. It's a good location. What can I say?
For sale.
Janice and Tim was, I mean, before we go down this non-conforming, was there a drive-through there?
Yes, it was. The metal, metal window with a slide in it and
Yeah.
That metal
Yeah.
Window was taken out by me. So I remember trying to rip that thing out. It had a thing that swung around and you put the stuff in it and it swung out to the people that came to the drive-through and, and they closed it. It's just a sliding little window there now. But yeah, I think there was a drive-through.
Yep. Okay. Uh, Dave?
Uh, yeah, uh, I always considered that section of town is actually an extension of Main Street. I realize it's zoned differently. But, uh, we're still looking for commercial properties, uh, in that section, uh, including the mill. If the mill ever takes off, and I say ever, uh, they had talked originally about commercial properties. So I would definitely be in favor of, uh, whatever it takes to make this property available for commercial use and with a drive-through. Uh, my only question is, I know Gordon talked about the drive-through using the existing. Um, I'm sure that building is not gonna be there if it, the property is sold. It'll be something will be real big rebuilt on there. So is this a uh, point that's gonna have to be discussed as using the existing drive-through or relocating on either that property or, uh, the old quilting place, uh, cause it might even be combined. Uh, cause they look to be pretty small in size for lots.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Now through the chair, um, no, my, my comment was just re-establishing a drive-through as a concept. It does not include having to be in the same building in the same location. It's a concept of re-establishing, you know, and again, that's why you talk to the municipal attorneys who, who can search the, uh, you know, SJC and, and appeals courts and they can, they can find the answers to that really fast. So it's, it's not that they would be handcuffed to that building and that specific location. It's just the concept of a drive-through is, is what I was getting at as re-established.
It'd be more like a use bank.
Yes, sir. That's basically right. You'd re-establish the use. Not necessarily exactly in the same footprint and area, Dave. That, that was my thought. And again, that's something that Leeper Vos need to speak to someone who can give them, I can't give them legal advice, you know, but they can get it from an attorney. A municipal attorney. So that, that's why I brought it up.
Peter?
Yeah, I wanna, um, talk about all the different options that have been discussed. The first one, um, that the visitors discussed was variances. And, um, first of all, this is not the board to ask about a variance. We don't grant or withhold variances. We don't hear variances. That's the Board of Appeals. But I do, I, I did serve once on that and I think I remember generally be, you're generally correct that it's very difficult to get a variance. You have to basically prove that there's something unique about your lot that prevents you from um, getting any real functional use out of it in any way at all. And so if you're just saying, well, I, you know, I could use it for a hundred different ways, but there's this hundred and first way is the one I really want. Um, you're probably not gonna get a variance. So, but again, it's not up to us to decide that. And if you're gonna be consulting a municipal attorney, uh, I'm sure that attorney can advise you on what the standards are for variances. Um, we also discussed, uh, changing the bylaw, which I personally has seen no objection to. I, I think I might feel differently if this were, you know, somebody proposing to tear down two historic buildings in the middle of town and put in a large, you know, flat new bank structure that would have taken one, one lot, but for the drive-through. That, that may have been what they were thinking of back then. But that, that's really not at all a concern up in your end of town, it seems to me. With the, with the mobile station up there occupying, you know, vast amounts of acreage. Um, it's really not at all anymore like the downtown to me. So if the plan you come to, your best choice is to ask us to support a change in the bylaw, either this spring or at a later time, I, I'm leaning to say that I would probably support that. I can't commit right now, but, um, I'd like to hear more before I decide, but I'm leaning towards saying I'd like to hear more before I decide, but I'm leaning towards saying yes. The other options are one that we've discussed in some detail and that is section six point one B. Which allows for reconstruction of the use. Um, and that does come here. And it does require a special permit, which. I don't know if you, Le Provos, are you guys familiar? I think you are with special permit process. Um, it, you know, you have to have a hearing and you have to get four of the five votes and we have to notify the neighbors and there's quite a bit of. Notice and process, but. Ultimately, they're, you know, they're often granted. Um. And the, the one that I really wanted to mention, uh, that I don't think Gordon had a chance to read tonight. And I read it and I was surprised. To see what's there is subsection six point one E. Abandonment, and I'm going to read that to you if you, if you don't mind. Any non-conforming use which has been abandoned or not used for two years or more. Shall not be re-established. Except by special permit from the planning board. Um, otherwise, any future use of such premises shall conform to the provisions of this chapter. So. Even though that use, if it existed, as you say, uh, has been abandoned for many years. There's no, and apparently abandonment extinguishes non-conforming uses, but if you come in. For a special permit under six point one E. It seems this board has the authority to grant that.
Yeah, that's Peter. The appeal, that's exactly, that's exactly what I was getting to. Was that it is up to the planning board to be able to do that without a zoning change. By special permit.
So there's, there's four options. And then the first one, I say, no, you know, I'd say you're, you're, that's a very long shot for you, but the other. Other than number two and number four, the bylaw change and the six point one E seem like they're viable for these folks. Thank you.
Um, Matt, you got something else?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, I, I kind of, uh, I just want to agree with Peter that. And Gordon brought it up and I appreciate that is that. We did it for the mobile home and it is the same. Process as we did for the mobile home down in South Lee and that would probably be the fastest way for them and. They can consult with an attorney, but I think we. Accept their application and hear the uh. Hear the presentation. So.
Sounds good. So, so in Janice and Tim, that's uh in a nutshell and you, you really hear the tone of the board. You know, if you came to us with something. Uh, but a, a lawyer always helps because they, they put the wording and, and they can really make a great argument. Um, that makes it ironclad.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. So now we've cleared up the whole thing and that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, folks, moving on. Uh, master plan. Um, Beth, do you have information on this for us? From Chris? Or not? We, we saw.
I think Sean is here.
Did any, I watched the meeting the other night. Did any of you guys watch a select board meeting?
No, have not.
It's in a delay mode. Um. Uh, one of the select, one of the select board members wanted to uh not um. Kind of wanted to get prices from somebody else besides Berkshire Regional Planning Board. Um, on a master plan before they move forward. Um. Pretty much based on. Um. It wasn't happy with Berkshire Regional and their performance. Um, I guess with the PCB dump. And. So it's in delay mode, basically, uh, until the board decides how to move forward. And so.
Which board is that? The select board?
Select board, yeah. Yeah, one member. Um, yeah, Mr. Jones actually made uh, wanted to get prices from somebody else. So I think the board. Uh, just held off for now. And Sean is here if he wanted to.
Yes. Sean, would you like to speak on this?
Yeah, um. I guess I would just speak to say that I think we were going to put it off for two weeks to see if we could get any pricing. From anybody else or, or maybe another interested. Uh, party, but I, I've. Uh. We've looked a little bit. I think we have a couple other options. I'm not sure. Well, we'll be able to dig up by then, but that was kind of where we left it.
I'm, I'm curious, what um, what are? Other options? Um, they're private uh consulting planners out there?
Yeah, I think, I think there was a, a couple private and then I think there was another more municipal. Uh, statewide.
Okay. Okay, because.
Yeah, the, the staff. Yeah, I think I've got an email somewhere. I can forward it to you guys.
Thanks. The um, uh, this, the staff and. The people, the planners that they have at Berkshire Regional Planning are. Pretty top-notch and uh, I think they'd be. Uh, well-suited to do this.
I'd be shocked if um. Another company can do it for.
That's.
The price and Berkshire Regional is fantastic and.
Uh, I understand the motive that is going on here, so.
Yeah.
So be it.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if I could ask, I don't want to put Sean on the spot if he doesn't want to speak to it, but um. I had the impression from reading the statute and I can't put my hand on it right now. That um, doing a, a plan, a master plan is a task for a planning board. Um, and I just wondering what, if any contact. The selectmen plan to have with us as they go forward with hiring consultants and doing master plans.
It could be, the, the select board would have to. Decide to appoint us to do that.
You. Yeah, Sean. Care to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, just from my perspective, I think once we, once we figure out the path, we just hand it over to uh the planning board for. Uh, a steering committee. That would be appointed by the planning board and. I think you have discretion on. Yeah, most, uh, most if not all of it and then. Um. You could bring in. Committee members, board members from other boards as well. I think you have some options, so.
Oh, that's great. I, I, I just want to, um, if you don't mind me continuing, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I'm really, I'm really happy that. Lee is getting serious about updating its master plan. I think. What Gordon, I want to second what Gordon said earlier about the importance of keeping a master plan up to date and I. I feel like ours is really um not been guiding our decisions nearly enough. Um, in the recent years, so I'm really glad that we're moving forward on it and. Um, I hope that um, you know, I hope that we can be involved, but I hope that the selectmen can stay involved too. Um. In the, in my earlier experience in another state, I uh wrote a town plan as a member of a planning board and. We were conceived of as the staff to the, to the selectmen. And I don't know if that's the model that you want to use. With us, but. Whatever model you use, I think it's really important that the selectmen stay involved and. There are a lot of decisions about the future of the town that get written into a, a master plan and. Having early and frequent input would be really, really useful. Thank you.
Exactly, um. If you really think about it, our, our current master plan, we had. All the paper mills were still. Running. Um, I'm not sure if we had a, a outlet center.
No.
No, so that, that's how dated it is. Uh. And, and just general municipal planning and the, the. Ideas of it have changed so much. I mean, our, our current plan was very protection. Um, there's a lot of protectionism in there for certain businesses and uh. I don't know. Um. Nationwide, uh, the. Uh. The views of how small towns are supposed to be set up has changed. Um. Um, Peg, did you had your hand up? Are you, did you want to say anything or? Before? No? All set? Okay, I see Kathy Hall now.
Yep.
Kathy.
Hi, just in um, relationship um with the master plan. Um, I did speak to the select board at their last meeting. About the open space and recreation plan that should go hand in hand with the master plan. When we had done the open space and rec plan. There were several pages at the end that um. Uh, we had to, um, decide what priorities were for the town, what was. Had, had to be done like within one year. One that was a medium type thing. That could be done over a couple of years. And then there was one that was, okay, if you could do it fine, if not, it's okay too. Um. But we're starting to think about um upgrading. That um, open space and rec plan. So um. At that time, we did have Berkshire Regional Planning uh work with us. Uh. The Lee Youth Commission kind of spearheaded it, but we had people from all the different committees. Um, within the town. So you know, from the library, right up to the select board, the planning board. Conservation Commission, uh, somebody was representative in terms of that open space and rec plant. So. I would imagine that um would be somewhere within that, that scope to do the master plan. Um, I wish at some point that plan, even though it's outdated. Um, could be put on the, the website. I don't know how many pages it is, so people could be looking at it to see. You know, what's really obsolete and just start. Um, you know, chopping away at it, um, even before you have established committees and subcommittees. Um, but I know that um, you know, um. We're working on different levels, but they're, they're, they all coincide. So certainly the open space and rec plan. Uh, should be part of, in my personal opinion, uh, be part of that master plan. Because that has to be approved. The open space and rec plan has to be approved by the state.
Great, thank you. Lot of good points there, um, especially with a committee. Peg, your hand went up and down again.
Yes, um, thanks, Buck, Mr. Chair. Yes, um, I think. What Kathy said, it's really relevant. Um. In the past. When the master plan or the open space plan, there were many meetings where people went. Um. To discuss what they felt, um, how they felt and uh. Uh, I think it's, um, it takes time. I don't think it's something that can be done. Very quickly. I think it does take a number. You know, it takes a number of meanings, a number of times to me and um, the more we can involve. Involve all members of the community, I think it's better. Um, that's my opinion. Um. For the community, because the, the community is changing, the demographics are changing. Uh, everything is changing, so. I think it would be a great thing to um pursue it and when it's done. I hope we just don't leave it on a shelf somewhere, which sometimes happens with some of these major plans. We. You know, a lot of time and effort goes into them and then they're filed away somewhere. Um, so I would hope that. There would be open communication during the whole process. As it goes along. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else thoughts on this? Um. Yeah, I think when. Time comes to uh some sort of subcommittee with many different, you know, a member from each board might be a good way to go about it. Uh, not just planning, conservation, um. Uh, you know, the uh League Youth Commission, perhaps a member there and so on. Um. That could work.
That's.
All right, moving on, we have a sign permit. Going to share it here. NBT Bank. This would be their freestanding sign. And then they have a sign over the main entrance. And then a sign in the back. Um, and the rest of these are directional signs that really don't, we don't need to endorse. Um, there's the one over there. Door. Think that will be where the freestanding front sign will be. And then I think that's on the back. So something like that out front. Um. The question is, are they, can they get two? Uh. Two wall signs, basically. That's how I'm seeing it.
What, what zone are we in?
DC BC.
DC BC.
I'm not sure that's right.
Which one?
I'm looking at the map. Um. It looks like, are they uh? East of the High Street Terminus? Or are they west of the High Street Terminus? I guess they're west. Yeah, um, they're, they're on the south side of Hart Street. They're where?
They're, they're before the river.
They're on the side where the old Price Shopper used to be.
Right.
Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah.
I thought I was, I got the wrong bank.
Mm-hmm. It's directly across from the Lee Bank.
Oh, okay, thanks Peg.
Yeah. You're welcome, Peter.
Okay.
Well, that's interesting and that bank has a drive-through. Both of them.
Yes, it does.
And it's in DC BC.
Yeah.
What surprises we have.
Well, what do you know?
Manny.
I think, I think the goal was to just limit. The drive, drive-throughs, you know, when they, when they. When they did that.
Yeah, I really wonder the history sometimes.
You know, if, if there's a drive-through that, that is like the Dunkin' Donuts, there's a lot of driving through. And there's people waiting down in the street and blocking traffic a lot, so.
Yeah.
But a bank's a completely different case, I think. Anyway. So we're in DC BC. I'm going to just look. Do, do we know what the size allowances are?
Getting there.
Page thirty-nine.
One thing about the general code I don't like is they don't give you the page number.
No, exactly, right?
So it's um seven point eight. Capital D. There's no, no argument for a corner lot here, is there?
No.
You don't think?
No, I mean, you got the funeral home on the corner, right?
No, it's not a corner lot.
Oh, it says a rear entrance signs allowed though. Shall not exceed. I didn't, I really, I didn't know that one. Huh? See, uh, seven?
Yeah.
So let's see sizes. Which ones you want to start with?
What's it say? Uh, the um. Two, so forty square feet.
That's not even a sign you're showing now, Buck. That's just like the top page of the proposal, right?
Hmm.
Go to the next page. What's the next page? Oh, no, I guess you're right. No, I'm sorry.
That is a sign.
Does. It says a new sign faces for existing. Double face, non-illuminated monument sign, three by five. Fifteen square feet.
Fifteen square feet, so. Fifteen square feet. So that's.
Are we under D two?
Well, which one do you want? I mean, this is the freestanding sign here.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're doing the free scene. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So freestanding sign that exceeds sixteen square feet is D eight.
Yep.
And then the front building sign over the entrance, that'd be that.
So that's, that's over the forty, isn't it?
Five by two. So that's ten foot, ten inches.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know. That's right. Yeah, that's good.
It's okay.
I was looking at the ten.
And then rear entrance.
So they're okay on that one?
They're okay on that one. Let's see, even if you want to go to, I think they got, let's see, eight square feet on the rear entrance.
Yeah, and that's allowed without a permit, so.
That's. Yeah, yeah, they are. That one's without a permit.
You're the, you're the one who caught that, Buck.
I, I've never noticed that one before. That's interesting.
I think it's okay.
Did you, I thought somebody said they had two building signs. Is that not the case?
That's what I was, I was putting this as a building sign, but it's a rear entrance sign.
Yeah.
So they're, they're three square feet. What they got there is three square feet. So we don't even need to warn them. It's oversized.
Right.
I think it's fine.
Okay. Just the directional signs and those are, those are fine anywhere. We don't have anything on those.
So I'll move. We endorse the application.
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Okay. Moving on, we have the minutes.
I'll motion to endorse the minutes.
One second.
We got two sets.
Right.
Want to specify? November eighth?
Sure.
Okay. We have.
Earlier, I was going to say I'll motion both of them if you want.
We should do them separate. Any further discussion?
Can I ask a question about the first one? I remember making a suggestion about the bike path. We, we met on the approval of minutes of ten twenty five. And I, I don't think this is what I said, but I, I can't remember that. Maybe you can help me remember. Remember, it says for approval of minutes ten twenty five, twenty twenty one, member Blums stated strikeout, quote, what is normally a end quote and put in quote, a proposed end quote bike path period, end quote. I think, I don't think I I don't know what the end quote stuff means. Maybe, maybe could we just change that to a proposed bike path and delete the words end quote? I don't think it makes any sense the way it appears. Anybody have any reaction?
Here we are.
Yeah, yeah. It's the first line of the twenty, ten twenty five minutes. I probably said, quote, but I, I meant the quote symbol if I did. But I think it makes more sense just, I was trying to get us to not say what is normally a bike path because it hasn't been constructed yet. And it, it's a proposed bike path. And I may have said, quote, bike path, end quote, because I think of it more as a walking path, even though the official title is bike path. So I'm sorry if I confuse things. But I'd like to change the, the minutes by taking out the words end quote.
Okay. Beth, you got that? Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, Peg?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Next set of minutes for November twenty second.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay. Approval and second, any further discussion?
I just want to say I really appreciate the continuing high quality of the minutes.
It is good, isn't it? You connect, I'm reading them and trying to remember what we did and you can see what we did.
It comes back to you. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any, no further discussion? Roll call vote. Peg?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Okay, that's it for the minutes. Well, minutes, other topics. Peter's been talking about the illumination standards and there is some, I saw your, your packet, your, what you sent around, Peter, and that from somewhat being in the industry, it was really interesting to look at that because it's old school stuff, we call it.
What do you mean by old? Oh, it's, well, it's out of date. It's like.
It's, yeah, there's, there's no mention anywhere of LED lighting.
I know.
Which has taken over the industry. It's really, and, and, and I tell you, downcast and shielded lighting is, is such the standard now. And there, they spoke about it in that as, as something that, you know, was needed to happen. And, and to look at what, how far we have come from that is pretty good.
Yeah.
It brings up, you know, I, I did a quick look around and there's a few towns that have adopted a, a dark sky policy. And that's, it's not a bad idea. If you want to embellish some more on it, that'd be great.
All right, well, I, I've had a bit of remorse about some of my votes on these gas station things. You know, I, I was driving down into Lee coming south from Lenox the other night. And I got to, you know, at the bottom of the hill when you turn left to go on the bridge. And then floating up, you know, off in the distance was this blue sort of line, you know, that was O'Donnell's Gas Station Island, which, you know, is lit up. I'm, I'm going to use a metaphor that actually occurred to me. Most of us, maybe not Beth, but most, the rest of us are old enough to remember the movie Close Encounters of the Third Kind. The spaceship comes down and floats above, you know, the light, the field of lights. That's the feeling I get from these gas stations. And I think we've made a terrible mistake in allowing these gas stations to light their fascias because they have like, you know, sixty foot signs now, light it up way up high. When we have, we have all these regulations that say, no, no roof signs, you know, tiny little signs, external illumination. And then there's this, you know, unidentified flying object above all of our gas stations. I just think it's very, very discordant with the overall tenor of the town and the idea that it's a New England town and we're trying to preserve our historical character. It just, these, these new gas stations strike me as something that's appropriate for Houston, maybe, but not Lee. And, and I'm also regretting, although it's not a lighting issue. I, I went by, last night I drove over to New York to see my grandson in a concert. And I went by another mobile station and I saw those, one of those big red, you remember that big red synergy thing that lady won?
Yep. They have them in Great Barrington now. Yep.
Oh, my God. It's just, it's like screams that passersby, come here to buy your gas. You know, it's just completely, it's completely useless except as an attraction to the eye, a bright red thing with a meaningless word synergy written on it. And I just feel like we've let it sort of get out of hand. So I, I called my brother-in-law who's a lighting engineer and he's up in Burlington. And he had this old, he said, if you want to really learn what the standards are, you buy this $500 book. You know, you probably have this book, Buck. It's IESNA lighting standards. It's like $500. I'm not asking that we spend $500, but he sent me this old thing. And I, there were a couple of things in it that really caught my eye. One was that they had lighting standards suggested for basically illumination levels at the ground level. And, and I think I told the board at the last meeting that I went around and I looked at the lighting levels for some of our gas stations. And the big Y, which strikes me as extraordinarily highly lit, actually isn't. The, the level of lighting at the pumps, when you aim your light meter up, is only fif, is fifteen foot candles, which is plenty of light. But at the Sunoco on Park Street, it's three times that. It's forty seven. And as I read this, this piece from Vermont, they, they mentioned something that I never really quite thought about before, which is that there can be kind of a race for illumination. That if you have a business that is lit adequately, but the guy next to you puts in something much, much brighter, then you got to go brighter because what used to be adequate isn't adequate anymore. You look dim now. Everybody's irises, you know, contract down and they go by the other guy. And so I just thought that maybe it's just the right thing to do is to just throw this into the, the pit with all the other master plan issues. And maybe that's all we want to do. But I just, I just think that we're sort of losing the war of trying to keep lighting reasonable and that we're losing it in, in really sort of all over the downtown because there are gas stations all over the downtown. And that sitco is going to be rebuilt and it's going to be much, much brighter than it was. There was no, no lighting on the fascia of that old sitco that they're working on now. And instead, it's going to be, you know, something very bright and very visible from a long distance. And it just doesn't, it's just a personal opinion and I hope some of you share it, but maybe you don't. I just think that it's not appropriate for a rural town that thinks of itself as a gateway to the Berkshires. That's all. So I'd be, I'd love to hear what other people have to say about it.
Hey, you were up and down again. What do you?
No, okay. Okay, Buck, Mr. Chair. The only thing I'm going to say is that I will say for myself, as a woman, if I were driving alone at night, I would want a place that I could see that looks safe. And where, when it could, I'm just sharing my thoughts. It gets dark here now, what, four thirty, five o'clock at night. I, I, I understand your concern, Peter, and I value that. I just, from my own perspective, I like to see a gas station. If I'm stopping for gas and I was alone, I were alone, I would want it safe and clean. And but those are my concerns. And I do understand what you're saying about when you come into town up at the bridge. I don't know how we would work it if we ever did change the lighting because so many of them, as you say, have already have quite a bit of lighting. And that's just my concern. The Sunoco station to me at night looks very safe and very clean. It is, you did your study and you said that they had more lumens than other places. And so do the other gas stations.
Hey, Peg, can I interrupt you just a second? Could you, could you do the favor of maybe go into the big Y and seeing if that feels adequately lit?
No, I think it does. I think it does.
I don't want to suggest, I don't want to suggest anything that makes anybody feel, feel unsafe. I just don't know what it takes to make it feel safe.
Well, I'm not sure either, but I'll just say when I go to Berkshire Medical Center at night, I really don't like work, walking in that parking garage at night. I'm a little afraid. I'm just saying, and it's, it's adequately lit. It's not that there's anything bad, but you know, having driven across the country at different times, I've seen gas stations that I wouldn't even stop at because I wouldn't feel safe if it were in the daylight maybe, but not when it gets dark. And it gets dark here so early. No, I think the big Y is fine. And I, I guess from my point of view, I don't know how you would lessen the lighting right now at this point in time when others have more. I don't know what the amount would be, Peter, so.
I think, I think that, that horse may be out of the barn, Peg, in terms of the gas stations.
I think that horse is out of the barn. And, you know, it's rather unfortunate, but.
But we have a, we have a, a used car or a car dealer maybe coming in on one oh two.
Right.
They burn a lot of lights too. And there will be, you know, there will be new gas stations or, you know, provisions to islands and that sort of thing over a very long period. Anyway, thanks for your thoughts.
Just my thoughts, Peter. I mean, I share your concern about, you know, it would be nice if they weren't here to begin with, but they are. And a lot of them do look very, very neat and very, very clean. Which is something when you're traveling, you know, you're looking for those kinds of things. Thanks.
Dave?
Yeah, referring to Peter's report. Yeah, the technology may be old and outdated, but I think the lumen numbers are still good. Even no matter how the light is created, whether it's LED or HID or HPS or whatever we're using for lighting, maybe old, but when it hits the ground, the number of lumens in different locations, I think that report is still up to date. And I think we are getting a little carried away under the canopies. The canopies are, are probably should be the most lit areas at the station, at these service stations. Just because that's where everything happens. You pump your gas, you do whatever you got to do to your car, you wash the windows, you walk to the building, whatever you're going to do, that should be the most lit areas. Reflective, reflectability, I think that's an issue that we should really watch. And even reports in there with the snow, how reflected, the white paint, all this stuff, I thought was pretty interesting. And I think we could live by it, but we just have to see updated standards for lumen light levels in different locations of these stations. Underneath the canopy, some of them, yeah, that does look like you're driving into downtown Boston. And you're coming into downtown Lee. But I think it's something, not that we can change, change what exists, but from here on out, I think we could have a say on just how bright they really are.
Thanks, Dave.
And, and that, that book you mentioned too, would, would probably be our, our baseline. You know, go, go by the engineers and, and they, they have figured out what is the safe level so we wouldn't have a problem going to an unsafe, you know, dimly lit, because you'd never want that.
You know, we had, we've had plans before us where people are brought in like site plans and they've shown, you know, parking lots with two foot candles and three foot candles. And, and, you know, these gas stations have seventy foot candles, right? Do they really need seventy or could they possibly get by with fifty, you know, or fifth or twenty five? I, I, I just think it's, it's worth discussing anyway.
And still be plenty safe too. And, and like you say, they get into the race. And still be plenty safe too. And, and like you say, they get into the race, uh, each, each one has to have the, the bigger, bigger light. So Matt, you got something?
No, I mean, I agree with both, uh, Peter and Dave. Uh, my, my biggest concern is, um. And that's not necessarily that I think it's too bright. I just like to make sure it's, it's all that, it's all cast down. And not affecting any of Butters and, uh. I mean, I, I, we probably could come to some, some sort of arrangement to, to give these guys a limit. Um, that would give them enough light, so, um, but I, I really don't have any problems with the current lighting. I, I kinda do feel like, um, it is a safety, uh, thing when you drive in, so. Not too concerned, but my biggest concern would be just that it's not, um. Uh, affecting the Butters. That's, that's all.
Yeah, that Sunoco station is in the middle of a commercial. Zone surrounded by banks and retail businesses and. Uh, the, the, even the resident, the old buildings across the street aren't really used for residences anymore, so.
Right.
It's a completely different case that, of somebody that's. In the middle of a residential street hanging up lots of lights.
I think we would hear, you know, if, if it becomes a problem for anybody that, you know, down on Houston Sonic Street, there are some residential. People around, uh, sicko that they're, you know, redoing and, and Starbucks now coming in. Uh, I feel like if, if there's an issue with the Butters, we'll, we'll hopefully hear about it.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing that is, uh, we won't hear till after the fact. Yeah. It's kind of hard once they installed to make less.
Well, isn't that something? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that, wouldn't that fall under, uh, the billing department, um. A complaint and then the billing department would have to look into and.
Not if we don't have any, if we don't have a bylaw governing it, governing it, there's no, uh.
I think we do. But I think there's two different things here. One is the neighbor who's complaining about, you know, a spotlight in his window. And the other one is just the general overall level of lighting. And, and I don't think we can rely on neighbors to deal with the second one. Maybe it's okay, maybe we're doing just fine, but, um, I think we're a little bit over the top.
Yeah, I, I ran across, um, if you guys want to look it up, the town of Orleans out on the Cape. And they, the Cape seems to be similar to our area as being a high tourist, you know, old, older. And they did an entire townwide outdoor lighting. So they even touched on residential properties, which was interesting. I don't know, I think that's a little too far, but it does, the, the neighbor with that, you know. 10,000 lumen spotlight out their backyard. It would address that.
Could we get a copy of that, do you think?
Yeah, I can, um, I got it here. I'll email it to you guys, the link.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna migrate on to a broader discussion about what's next and bylaws.
Yeah, well.
So we've talked about a bunch of things. We've talked about. I don't have it all in front of me now, but we've talked about gas stations, we've talked about internally lit signs, we've talked about. Um, there's another big one too that I'm not coming to mind.
Uh, freedom of speech signs.
Oh, yeah, 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 there's just the, the free speech signs. And, oh, and enforcement and, you know, can, when, if ever can, uh, town official go and grab up a sign? So I've made, I've started to think about some of these things and I've started writing some stuff down. I don't want to share it with you tonight. But I want to tell you that I'm, um, working on something. And I'd like to have the board discuss with me at some point, maybe soon, maybe later, whenever it's convenient for you. But also I'm bringing it up because there are a couple of other things that I think Matt mentioned at the last meeting that he might want to. Have included in a packet and I don't know, Matt, if you wanna. You want to come up with your own draft or something, or you want to call me and we'll work on something together or. Just work on something separately from my project here or what I've got in this so far. I just want to offer to, you know, incorporate and move forward on the stuff you were interested in.
Yeah, no, I, I, um, I just wanted to, I think my biggest thing was having a discussion on Airbnbs. Just having that discussion and if the board was even willing to, um, get into that. Um, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to limit them or we don't want, I should say, we don't want to get rid of them. But, or at least I don't, but I want to make sure we're. Doing our best for the town and making sure we're ahead of it.
I don't really know how much, I don't know how much Airbnb stuff is going on. I know that in Great Barrington, when they addressed this. The theory of the proponents was that if you restrict short-term rentals, then. People who own property they aren't living in will offer it for long-term rentals and that will help with the housing crunch. And then other people said, no, it doesn't work that way. It's not going to have that effect.
I think.
That at all part of your thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's goods, there's, there's good and just like everything, um, I think there's good. Stories of, of Airbnbs, um, that can help people, um. Offset their income and later life and, and then I think there are the bad sides, which, um. I think can bring in outsiders only looking to purchase for investment and only doing rentals. And then that of course jumps up on the, uh, local person being able to afford. We, I mean, I'm in the business and I have a lot of people that. They're saying, can we, can we, can we rent Airbnbs? That's, it's always a question. Um, and it's all the way from Beckett, Otis, Lee. It's always a question. You know, we're gonna buy it and if we're not here all the time, we may rent it. So it's definitely, um, going on, but the good side of it is they take care of, people have to take care of their properties, keep them up. Um, I mean, there is a good side to it, but there, there is a argument to be made that it could be. Transient people coming into your neighborhood. Um, you know, not really, uh, keeping that local connection. Um, you know, like, is it, is it something where Airbnbs are, w- with the homeowner having to be there? You know, that may be better.
That would be a tough one because look what we just did for the bed and breakfast by law. It, and I, I, I do think that that's a good, good point, but we just made two years ago, we did the. Our current bed and breakfast by law.
But that was for bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
This is, this is.
Didn't, they didn't have to be onsite.
And I don't think they do for a com- commercial business like a bed and breakfast. I mean, bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't think they should be forced to live. Um, but, but.
What's the difference?
Single, a, a single house or that people come up and buy a big house and rent it out every weekend or. You know, weekly with different people. And I'm not saying I'm right, by the way, I'm just saying, should we have the discussion and look at? Um, now I know Buck, you mentioned Lennox's bylaw. Is maybe too restrictive, but maybe we should start with that and maybe edit it from there.
I think, well, I think theirs, theirs was a protectionist. Bylaw that was, that was by the in-owners, if you read it. And if you saw.
Great Barrington.
Yeah, they have an interesting one and their, their viewpoint is, you know, it's, um. You know, you have the people that are using it to supplement their income so they can afford their house. And it also, you gotta remember, it does bring people into the area.
That's why I say there's, there's good and there's bad. I, I'm ju- and, and I, and I think it's. And I'm not saying get rid of it. I'm not saying we want to stop it. I'm saying, do we want to look at maybe making some regulations to where?
Peg?
You know. Um, or it's gotta be a primary home. You know, could that be one?
Yeah. Peg, do you have?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I did read the Great Barrington article. I thought it was very interesting, um. And I do agree with Matt, there's good and bad. Sides to this, um. I do think if you live on the premises and you rent your room to people or you have an in-law apartment or whatever. Um, you do have some control, you have control and. Uh, it can get out of hand now, as it does has in some communities, um. So I don't, I'm not opposed to looking at it, um, and getting some more information on it. Cause I do think it's something, I don't even know if the state eventually is going to be regulating. Some of the things that we're speaking about. I'm not quite sure about that, but I don't think it would hurt to look at it.
They, they already do as far as the, uh, as far as the income. All, all air, Airbnbs pay the room tax.
Right.
That's they're registered as businesses through the state.
Right. I'm not opposed to, to it, but I do think, um, as Matt said, I do agree that some of the housing. For people just gets, they can't afford it, they can't afford it, um. I don't know, I think it's something we should look at and really read about. It does require, I think, a great deal of, uh, study before we. Started to change it, but it's not a bad thing to look.
It is a conversation on every buyer that I deal with in the business mentions Airbnb. I mean, out of 10. Seven of them.
Are they, are they looking for investment properties?
Yeah, well, they're, they, they're calling it their second home, but they would rent it out. And, you know, it's, it's making it more viable, I think, for them. To, to purchase a second home, which I, I totally understand and, um. Uh, you know, I, I know of like, there's two or three houses just on Church Street that are just, you know, Airbnb.
So you, okay, you take, you take a second home owner scenario, okay? Um, and one argument is, well, we're losing, we need full-time rental housing. Okay, so this person, the second homeowner does the air, does the Airbnb when they're not using the house. They wouldn't rent that full-time to somebody. It would just stay vacant. But by them renting it, it brings people more options into our area. Which brings revenue into our area. It, it, you know, it's interesting, but then on the other hand, you have these people, somebody say. I don't know, down in, down in White Plains, New York says, oh yeah, I'd like to do an investment property up in the Berkshires. And they absolutely never come here and they hire a manager. To do it and.
Right.
That, that's where some of the issues come in.
Yeah, and, uh, like, like you said, there's good and bad and I don't want to stop it. Um, it's not that I want to stop, um. And I definitely don't want to stop any local people, uh, from getting creative and using it for an income.
Yeah.
And, and while you're getting asked, Matt, is, uh, if some places down around the city and through Jersey have, have. Totally banned it altogether. So people have heard of that and they're seeing it and that's why they're asking.
Yeah, I, uh, and I, I don't, and it is good that we bring people, you know, the other argument, the good side is that people come and they stay here and they end up. Liking it and they say, geez, wouldn't this be a nice place to move to, you know? It, it, there is some good in our restaurants benefit from it and. So it is good. I'm not anti Airbnb. I, it's just that I think this is something that we as. Planning board members should look at and maybe not do anything. Maybe we come to. Something where we just should leave it as is and let it play out naturally. Or maybe we should do some light restrictions like Great Barrington and I haven't even looked at either bylaw. I mean, I can start with the Great Barrington bylaw, print it out, send it to Beth and we can just start with that. Gives us a baseline to. You know.
The, uh, the approach Lennox went is they limited the days. That people are allowed to do it and that, I don't know, that was, it was a real knee-jerk reaction from them.
Yeah.
But that, you know, and it, it was driven by the in-keepers, which was in- interesting.
Well, they have a lot more ins up there, so they were being affected and I get that part of it too. The, and the other thing, this leads me into, um, accessory. Uh, uh, what do we say, accessory dwelling?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't want to ban people from doing accessory dwellings. I, I just, and I hate, I don't like how we have a, have to have it attached. If it's not attached, again, I think we restrict our locals who might need some extra income. But maybe it's one of those things where we say you have to be on the property, has to be your primary residence. Something like that and that keeps, you know, that total commercial renting aspect to a limit.
Or, or what, or even possibly within a, I, I don't know if it'd be legal, but in a, a certain radius. Cause here's a scenario, you have a, a family home in town. Uh, say your, your parents home.
Yeah.
And they pass, you, there's four or five siblings. They want to keep the house, but nobody really wants to live in it. So they say, okay, well, we'll keep the house, we'll rent it occasionally to pay the taxes and upkeep. And, and we get to keep the house in the family.
Well, they're not really.
Nobody would be living there.
They're not really keeping it in the family. I think those, that family should discuss selling it.
Well, they, they use, they, you know, they use it for their vacations, they use it for holidays. There, there's that scenario.
Well, uh, yeah, right. I mean, no, that is a good point. Uh, I agree. There, there's definitely some things to work through.
Um, yeah.
I don't know, and, and this is not my solution to lower home prices, but there is a downside where, I mean, I have local buyers that. Really can't even get into the game.
Hmm.
I mean, it's happening everywhere. It's not just because of Airbnb, I'm just.
Right.
Um.
It really is a sad situation about housing. First family, first houses are just not available at all. Yeah.
Oh, I mean, they gotta spend $500,000. I mean, it's a lot of money.
They're gonna get that, yeah.
And the, uh.
But I don't think Airbnb regulation is gonna solve that. It's just, um, it may, I don't know, may help, but, but.
Well, they.
Were you asking? Go ahead, Buck.
Go ahead, go ahead, Peter.
Were you asking Matt whether we should change the bylaw to allow for separate mother-in-law? Buildings on the, on a residential lot?
Um, yes, I was.
Yeah, that's an accessory dwelling.
I think that's, I think that's a, a valid issue. I think that we could alleviate the housing crunch a little bit that way. Um, and I don't know, but I think we gotta be careful because, um, a lot of lots are. You know, pretty well fully occupied by their, by their residential dwellings. And we'd have to be careful to figure out what sort of places.
I think. Yeah, I think it would be a density, it would be a density, uh, regulation, right Buck?
Uh, that's what I've seen before. I mean, and then you put a, uh. The accessory dwelling would have a square footage limit.
Yeah.
And then you can even get into the, the tiny homes.
So a smallish house on a bigish lot, we ought to allow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, some, some people, some people in tight residential zones won't be able to have the space to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
But I don't feel like we should, um, make it, uh, it has to be attached. To me. I think that limits.
Well, that's how it is now.
But in, but then, but then ha- but, but also protecting from the commercial aspect of it. I think accessory dwellings, maybe the, the owner, it's gotta be their primary residence to keep that. You know, someone, the, the primary owner living there is gonna want a good tenant, right?
Mm-hmm.
So they're gonna try to find a good tenant. They're not just gonna rent it to anybody and more transient type people. So I think we could have that. Uh, as a. I don't know if it'll work or not, but, uh, as your primary home or you have to be, yeah, it has to be your primary home. You have to want to live next to your tenant, the one you rent to.
I think I've even seen, um, some of them, they, they write it as it, it can't be owned by a corporation either. Or an LLC.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So that.
True, yeah.
It may not, it may not work over the long run. I mean, it, it's, it's great when you're building that mother-in-law house out in the backyard, but. 50 years later, you know, if somebody has a lease for that building, that new building. And you want to sell the property and the person who buys it doesn't, isn't ready to move in yet. Um, I don't know if, I don't know if we can really, that, that limits the sale of the whole property, right, in the future to only to people who are. Gonna be moving into the main house.
All sorts of things, is it, to think about.
I'm trying to think of that as you're talking. Say it again.
Well, so I, I have. Well, so I, I have, let's say forty thousand square feet. I'm an R forty and I build a mother-in-law house in the back, little house. And it's all okay under the new bylaw, but then I die. And I want, and my family wants to sell the house and they sell it to somebody who um, isn't ready to move in yet or doesn't wanna live in it, just wants to own it. Do they, they can't buy it then because if, unless they're ready to move in, right? They, they had the, we're gonna need, we're gonna have the bylaw say that if you have a mother-in-law house in the back that you're renting, then the main house has to be lived in by the owner. That's.
Has to be their pri- has to be their primary home.
Yeah, so, so that limits the sale of the property, the next sale of the property to people who wanna actually live in the house that they're buying. Which may not be a problem. Most people do. But not everybody, you know, not everybody's gonna move up from the city immediately or.
Yeah, yeah. Now, this is gonna be accessory dwelling, so we would limit to that. And I, I envision a lot of like garage, over, over the garage.
Yeah.
Apartments.
No, I'm with you on that. It's just what happens later when the property comes up for sale that I'm worried about.
Yeah, if they, they can buy it without renting the garage, then they can buy it.
But what if there's somebody in there with a lease?
Well, that'll have to be worked out with the seller. Seller won't be able to sell it until the lease is up.
Right.
Usually if you're thinking about selling it, you'd say, well, I'm, I got a lease for another year, so I, I, I have to either buy them out or wait a year and then I'll sell it or, you know. Yeah, that'll be taken.
You're the expert on this. I just didn't know who's.
No, no, I'm not an expert, no. So I'm. I'll go ahead and print out. Uh, we can print out bylaw that you guys want me to print out. Maybe Beth, can you? Can maybe Beth print out the Great Barrington Airbnb bylaw and then we can have it.
Start, start with it.
An accessory dwelling, if you guys wanna start.
I think that could go hand in hand.
What do we, what do we read for that? Is there, is there a model somewhere? Buck, you know about this?
Yeah, I know Monterey has one. I believe Great Barrington also has one. I think even Lennox might.
I see Beth nodding.
And there, and somewhere around Town Hall, there was a draft in our bylaws for it.
Yeah.
Years ago.
Long gone.
I believe, yeah.
So, so, so tho- so those two items and then, uh, the, we need to get on Jeremiah, right? For the, uh, wasn't he gonna give us something for the free speech signs?
Right.
Yep.
Wasn't gonna.
Just thought I'd mention it.
Listen, I, I've given up on Jeremiah giving us anything. I, I have, I have done some research on this. I've read the Supreme Court cases that, I, I read the ACLU letters. I have a draft for your consideration. I'm not, uh,
Okay.
I'll try to supplant Jeremiah, but I wanna, I don't wanna wait until, you know, the end of time either, so.
Well, I'm ready to start talking about it. We said we would, so we better.
I'll send you guys a draft of the stuff.
Okay.
Working on, okay?
Peg?
Nope, that's great. Thanks.
So here's something to think about, Matt. So if we're, if we end up requiring primary residents, that means all these wonderful cottages that we all brag about would have been impossible.
Wonderful.
They all have quarters for all the help to live on on premises, accessory dwellings, but none of them were primary residents.
What cottages you're talking about?
You're talking about.
The old cottage.
Gilded Age.
The Gilded Age cottages.
Oh.
Yep.
Wow.
Oh, Peg, there's more of it around than you think.
Oh, I know.
Listen, I, I'm not, I'm not saying I have the answer on all of it, but I, you make some very good points. I don't wanna, I don't wanna hurt it. But I don't wanna, I wanna be on, on top of it.
If the Gilded Age cottages had a problem, they'd have it today and it would only get better if we do what Matt wants, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean, you, you go South County, there's quite a few places that have the main house and then they have the, uh, caretaker's house on property. A lot of that, yeah.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, and they don't live there. It's not their primary residence. I mean, um,
What about Highland Farm? They got houses all over the place, right?
Yeah.
It's all the one farm.
Yeah, that's, that's all grandfathered in. Who knows? Who knows what happens up there? It looks beautiful.
That's true. Well, well, they, here's the thing. A lot of those people that have caretakers on the premises, good, I'm glad you brought that up. They don't rent their house out.
No.
They just have the caretaker there taking care of the property.
But, but. By doing the accessory dwelling in that certain way where it has to be primary, um,
Yes.
Residents, you could cause a prob- you know.
There you go.
It, it's that spider web again, where you pull one way, it pulls something else, you know?
So maybe we can't, yeah, maybe it's too much negative effect if we do that.
Yeah.
Um, but.
I don't know.
The ripple, ripple in the pond.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta make sure we don't hurt, hurt people, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, then if you wanna watch our meeting, I guess we're on YouTube now. So, enjoy.
Oh, great.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we on YouTube or are we on, um, C, uh, CTSB or same thing?
Both.
We're on CTSB and then it, it gets, it gets downloaded and transferred to YouTube, apparently. Yeah, so, we'll see. I, I know of a couple of comments I had tonight already that'll get highlighted, so wonderful.
Are we, oh, should we be signing up for social media, Buck? Should, is there some, should I be doing some, you know, brand of Twitter or something to find out what people are saying about all of this?
I, I think we get our TikTok account and, and all that stuff. We could, we could really do some things. De-monitored.
I guess everybody's happy with our, uh, our bylaws, cause we're not getting anybody here.
Nobody's here.
Sean's hand is.
Sean's got something. John?
Well, no, I just wanted to comment on the, the social media stuff. I think the town could really, that's something that we could really invest in and be easy and cheap to just make uh, a better social presence and I don't know what exactly we would go after, but definitely could, could use a lot more of that. Like to see that looked into.
Like a Facebook channel, like a Facebook channel, Sean?
More Twitter.
Twitter. But Facebook is so old people, you know? Peter, it's just us old people doing it.
I know. I've given up having any idea what I'm supposed to know about this.
You gotta have the twenty-second TikTok videos that.
Videos.
That's all anybody, they, that's the attention span is about twenty to thirty seconds, so.
As I was asking you for advice on social media, I realized I should be asking my grandchildren.
Pretty much.
I, I have to be honest, they got something going, cause I read, uh, my news on Twitter. I mean, I read the real papers. I read the Times, the Post, you know, I, I do read, but they're, they're, they're great. They're in excerpts, you know, of short little bits of each article and, uh, it's about all I can handle. When I pull out the New York Times and try to read the whole paper, man, I go to sleep fast.
Yeah, and, and I tell you, the short videos, you, you get addicted to them. You, you'll just lose hours, like.
You do.
Yeah, it, it's really bad.
I know my, my son's always on it, you know, and, and I actually start watching them with them. They're that, they're, they're kind of, uh, they are addicting.
And it's funny, the algorithm they use, you know, you, you take like myself and it's all, um, construction equipment with fails and people doing stupid things and.
They know what they're doing.
Cars. They, they know how, they know how to market it, so. Anything else, folks?
No.
One last motion.
Move, we adjourn.
Okay, see you next time. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.